This is this person.
So I have this to you.
Right.
Well, I always I always have that call like the meeting has started. Where's that today? I see. So no voice of God today saying the, okay, I get to be voice of God. We're gonna get started. So we are online right now. And before I get started, I think there's so many new people making it here at these meetings. I want to make sure that we call out, you know, where the free public parking lot is. Takes a little bit of a walk, but at least it's free and then all the other things. So if you want to keep an eye on that for for the next meetings coming up in the future, that's that's where the parking is. So you're not having to pay City of Phoenix parking fees. So first of all, welcome everyone. It's the formal board meeting of November 15th, 2023. I will go to item number one, which is roll call. So Madam Clark, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Good morning Supervisor Gates.
Here.
Supervisor Galvin.
Here.
Supervisor Sellers.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo, I understand, is on his way and Chairman Hickman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah Supervisor Gallardo did call in and say he's running a little bit late. So we'll look forward to his attendance. We will now go on to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Supervisor Galvin today is sponsoring today's pledge and prayer. So Supervisor Galvin.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. It's my honor to welcome Fire Chief Scott Kruhshak of the Rio Verde Fire District who's going to lead our meeting today with the invocation and prayer. Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'd like to make some comments about his service to our county and our city afterwards.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, if we could all please rise.
Thank you all very much for having me here. I'm proud and honored to do this. All join me in prayer. Father, we are so blessed to have our Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. They work diligently for our safety and well-being, even when their jobs are difficult and often thankless. Give them strength and help us remember to thank them for their sacrifices and service. Also, Lord, please watch out for our first responders. They have very dangerous jobs. Give them clarity and help them to make calm and collected decisions in difficult moments that they face. Give them the ability to stand strong. Fill them with courage. Give them guidance whenever they don't know what to do and give them your peace as they deal with the pain and suffering of others. May they have compassion for those they encounter and demonstrate your kindness every day. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Supervisor Galvin.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Chief Kruhshak, thank you so much for coming down here. I just want everyone to know that Chief Kruhshak has had an illustrious career as a first responder and serving the people here in Maricopa County. Some of the highlights of his career include that he has served nearly 38 years at the Phoenix Fire Department. He started in 1980 as a firefighter and completed his career with the city as an assistant fire chief. During that time, he was appointed by the city manager's office where he spent five years as the City of Phoenix's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Very tough and important role. He was also a 20-year member of the Arizona Task Force One, which is the Phoenix Fire Department's federal urban search and rescue team, where he held the positions of search team manager and task force leader. Chief Kruhshak has also been a command staff member of FEMA's Federal Incident Support Team and the incident commander for the City of Phoenix Incident Management Team. But I want to particularly want to point out and thank Chief Kruhshak for his efforts last year regarding the diamond fire. This is an area that affected folks up in the Rio Verde foothills. These are people who unfortunately were already being cruelly treated by having their water shut off and now they had to deal with a large fire. And Chief Kruhshak and I had a great conversation this morning. And you know, when people's lives and property are saved, it doesn't happen by accident. It happens due to the great work by our fire services and the coordination of all the different departments. And this morning, he was telling me how working with our office, the county emergency response, federal, state, all the different agencies that had to work together in order to make sure that they save tens of millions of dollars in property and more importantly, lives were saved. So Chief Kruhshak, thank you so much for your work in the fire diamond fire, but thank you for everything in your service to our to our county. I really appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Thanks for being here. All right, we'll move on to item number four under Board of Supervisors. It is a pet showcase by Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. And Kim is here today and I'm looking and that does not look like the same dog again. So I am hopefully Haley or Hallie got adopted, I hope, and now somebody's pinch hitting.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, Hallie got adopted. Not surprising. She's adorable. We updated her photo and that's what did it, I think. But we do still have probably close to 100 Huskies right now. So if anyone's looking for a Husky, we got plenty and they're all great dogs. But today we have Dottie, who is also a great dog. She's about a year old. She arrived at the shelter on November 4th. So she's been with us for a couple of weeks. We do believe she's possibly deaf. Not just because she's not listening to me, but you know, we tested out with the squeaker toy and and clapping and stuff and she's just not reacting, but that's okay. That means the barking dogs and her kennel wing aren't preventing her from sleeping. She is a really good dog. She just needs some training. Like I said, she's a young puppy still. She walks pretty good on a leash. She's just really, really curious about everything, but she'd be great in a home that's willing to train her and work with her. And she's already spayed, so she can go home today.
Great. Okay. Any takers? Going once? Well, well, good, good, good luck to her. And Kim, a question. You mentioned it. We have 100 Huskies in the state of Arizona shelter. Huskies are bred to be cold weather dogs and we've tried to pull out the stops. We've talked to Minnesota, Alaska to try to see if we could make a trade to see if if maybe some of the families in those regions. I watched a video of a Husky that was just covered in snow. And they pointed out that their, you know, their internal body temperature made for this, but they're not made for 110-degree weather. And trying to adopt out Huskies in Arizona, I look at my two dogs that look at me like I'm insane when I want to see if they'll go outside. But these poor Huskies, you know, that are that are here in the state. Is there something specific or special going on with the Huskies to try to get them into good homes, air-conditioned homes if they're gonna live here?
Yeah, you know, we've done a couple news stories just announcing, hey, we do have Huskies. A lot of people don't think that we do or they just are unaware that we have so many Huskies. So we did some news stories on that. I actually reached out to the Minnesota Animal Shelter on my own. I reached out to their PIO and said, hey, like, what can we do? And I'm from Minnesota, so I tried to pull that card. And she was interested. Unfortunately, they have about 200 other shelters wanting to transport dogs there. So I'm hoping by offering the Huskies and Huskies only that that they're still interested. So fingers are crossed, but we're trying. We're trying because we agree the Huskies would much prefer the colder weather.
Well, I'm just making a call out to the public with this type of with this type of dog. We've always had a problem with pit bulls overwhelming our shelters and now we have Huskies as well. So if you have relatives in cold weather states that are looking for a family dog that will fit in very well in the cold weather state and you're gonna go visit them for Thanksgiving or Christmas, take a Husky with you. All right?
That's a good idea.
Okay, just throwing it out there to everybody. So thank you, Kim. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next we are gonna go on to a presentation. So number five is very important to me. And I know to this board and to other members here that see him with us all the time. We're announcing Ken Prescott's retirement from the county and he's gonna sit there and act like he's stoic. So but he's protected us all the years that I've been here. And I wanted to recognize him today and thank him for his service. How many? How many years, Ken? Year 24. So so what I would like to do is present Ken with a plaque and get a photo with him. And you finally get to look at the crowd this way instead of at their backs and everybody else. So Ken, can you please come up and accept a plaque from the board for your service?
Let me get that.
So Ken, I always get to see you go and put the dais up so people can talk. You're always great with that type of service as you look out for us, too. So I'm going to let you operate that for yourself today. I'd like to know if you'd like to say a few words.
Yes, sir.
And don't call me sir.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Madam County Manager, Madam Clerk, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, I'll be as brief as possible because public speaking is not my strong point, so please bear with me. If I remember correctly, in the past, when I've had to speak to this many individuals at one time, it was in a highly controlled setting, and the language would have been deemed totally inappropriate. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the past 23 years with Maricopa County. The last 14 of those years, I have spent working alongside all of you on the 10th floor. During that time, I have worked for many supervisors and a few county managers, all of which are now lasting memories. I could not have made it through all these years without the dedication, the leadership, and support that I've received from each and every one of you. I'm especially proud to be a senior member, aka old guy, of the Security Services Team. I started in a part-time position at the Durango Complex when there were only three jails, McDot, Flood ACC, and a few other nondescript buildings. I left Maricopa County for a short time to take a position at the state and then realized I should have never left the county in the first place. When I did return to the county, my start date is etched in history. It's the infamous morning of September 11th, 2001, was my first day back. The department began as Public Safety and then Protective Services under both FMD and Human Resources. Today, Security Services is a part of the Emergency Management Division under Mr. Rob Rowley. The Security Services Division is continuing to grow and expand in its role with all the vital services that it does provide to Maricopa County. I have no doubt that this division will have continued success in meeting new goals and addressing all the challenges that lie ahead. A little off-script here. Had I not made a decision to return to Maricopa County, I would have not met the most incredible woman there is, and that would be my wife, Diane, who was an employee at the time of So by my returning, I made the absolute right choice. Again, I want to thank all of you for your friendship, your confidence, and the trust that you have shown me. This recognition today is deeply humbling and is greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Welcome to the [inaudible].
Thank you all very, very much.
All right, Supervisor Galvin.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ken, thank you so much for your service, and thank you for that wonderful speech. I'm the new guy here, but you have made me feel like a part of the team since day one. And I always remember every single time I go up to the 10th floor, you always greet me with that great smile. And you're just a class act, and you treat everyone with respect and humility in service to our county. And I want to thank you so much. That speech exemplifies the kind of person that you are. And I always enjoy our brief chats, whether we're talking about the Midwest, or your family, or your grandkids. I always felt safe around you and always appreciate how you make everyone around you feel safe as well, whether they're citizens or elected officials or county staff. And I'm very happy for you, and I want to wish you congratulations, but Ken, I'm going to really miss you. Thank you.
Great. Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Echo what my colleagues have said already. Ken's going to be really, really hard seeing you go. I know we keep trying to, you know, talk one another into not leaving. No, that's not true. But so sorry to see you go, but it has been a true honor to get to know you. To me, you exemplify what it means to be a public servant, and I think Supervisor Galvin put it very well, you treat everyone with respect. And that's what this country used to be about. We need to get back to that. You personify that, Ken. And let me say, on behalf of myself and my family, thank you for keeping us all safe, and we wish you the very, very best.
Supervisor Gallino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Galvin kind of took the one thing that I was going to really amplify. And thank you, Ken, for everything you have done. You have just been just a wonderful person to work alongside with. You all do, and that's our entire security team, do a remarkable job. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that they're involved in, and they just do an excellent job. But Ken, you have, and as Galvin said, have been the one person on the 10th floor. And there are times, Mr. Chairman, it's no doubt, I mean, it's no secret here, there's times where, you know, some of us, myself, have some, you know, we have some rough mornings, and we're trying to get through them, and it's, everything's happening, and you're coming to work, and you get off that 10th floor, and the first person that says good morning and greets you and talks to you just makes you feel so much more healthier and better, and that's Ken. And it is so true. It is so true. So Ken, I just want to say thank you. Now, as a supervisor, but just as a friend, just thank you so much for everything you have done, not only for myself, or my entire office, and just for all of Maricopa County. You are just a pillar there on the 10th floor. You have been the one that have seen, I'd be curious to know how many supervisors and county managers have been up there on the 10th floor that you have worked alongside with over all these years. But nonetheless, you have just been a true friend, and Galvin and Mr. Gates are absolutely right. It's a small talk, even when we're having a tough time, and it's, things are not at its best. You know, it's just sitting down, talking about stuff. Let it be a ballgame, let it be your family, let it be whatever. It can be the weather. But it's just those small talks, it just makes you so much better. So it makes me feel better. Thank you, Ken, for everything you've done. Thank you for your service here, and I'm going to miss you. Best of luck.
Thank you, Steve. Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, not only has Ken made us feel safe, it seems like everything we do and every place we go, he's there to support us. I really have tried hard to convince Ken that he doesn't want to retire, which I've not been successful at. But, you know, I've only had the pleasure of working with him for a few years, but what professionalism under very strenuous circumstances. I can't imagine anyone doing the job better than he has. Ken isn't one to share a lot of personal information, but I gathered a few tidbits I'd like everyone to know about.
Uh-oh.
He began his career as a young man of eight years stuffing ads into papers at a newsstand in Chicago. I believe it would be considered illegal under today's child labor laws, but those were simpler times. While working for the Cook County Sheriff's Office, Ken had a side job providing security at some of the major rock concerts of the time, Led Zeppelin, Kiss, The Rolling Stones, and others. I was informed that he was also providing security at their after-parties. I know there are stories he's not telling us about from those. Ken, I wish you the best of luck, and I want to thank you for your kindness and service that you provided in my office over the years that I've been here. Thank you so much.
Well, Ken, this is always the best part of being chairman. I get to go last. And I just want to tell you and let everyone know just how important Ken has been to me over these, especially these last three years, as I've gone out into the community and spoke a couple things. I've let everybody know as I'm talking, like, hey, just letting everyone know, there's somebody watching you as you watch me, because it has gotten very intense for a lot of us when it comes to death threats. And it's real, everybody. Ken could tell you specifically what happened in this auditorium so many years ago when a supervisor was shot due to a vote about a stadium, of all things. And now we're talking about the protection of our elections, the integrity of them, and some people feeling like we are going south on that, which is wholly untrue. And I want to thank you for that, because you are out there with us in the community. And I also want to remind everybody that has been in this auditorium, that have come here to say things about us and are with their vim and vigor, with conflict in their heart, and look over at Ken as he looks at you sternly. He's not only protecting us, he's protecting you, because you don't know who's sitting next to you. You don't know what they have in their heart. So I hope that people, when they're here, understand he is equally protecting the speaker, the board, and the auditorium itself. So thank you, because sometimes we look at police officers, law enforcement, with the intent of they're on the other side, and that is wholly untrue as well. They're here to protect all of us. So Ken, you do a fabulous job with that, and I will always appreciate you. But I will tell you, thank God for retirement. You're going to get to see retirement. You get him back. But there is a family business called Maricopa County that always would love to have you guys come up to the 10th floor and let us know what's going on in your lives. Enjoy your retirement. Keep safe doing it. And snub our nose that we're here while you're out doing some great stuff, okay? Enjoy those kids. All right. You're welcome. Okay. We are going to move on now to the planning and zoning part. Before I get started, I know we got started a little bit late. We are talking a lot. I do know that Supervisor Gallardo has a hard stop at noon today. And Supervisor, would you like to say what you've got to go off and do?
I have a Maricopa Association of Governments meeting at 11:30.
Okay, so we do have jobs to try to run this meeting and get through all the topics. We're here to hear you, but we also know that if you want us here to hear what you have to say, we're going to stick with that two minutes. Juanito, how many speaker slips do we have on individual items? I'm going to seal the speaker slips now. It's 10:09, it's almost 40 minutes after the start. How many speaker slips do we have at two minutes each?
Chairman, on specific agenda items, we have approximately 30 speaker forms.
Okay.
And for public comment, 16.
And for public comment, 16. Okay. Combine all that, and that's a lot of minutes, and I'm going to be missing some supervisors then, because with that many speaker slips, we are going to go past 12. So what I would ask of you, is there somebody that wants to talk about multiple topics? Can you find any speaker slips that have, I know it's, thank you for saving the paper in the speaker slips and not killing trees, but...
Chairman, they're pretty much all on different topics. We have like four for item number 37, two for 38, two for 44, then individual for 45, 47, a couple for 48.
We don't have speaker slips that have 10 items, circle?
No, we received individual speaker forms.
Okay. I am going to just let everyone know before we get started with the agenda topics and trying to get to the public session also, so my colleagues can be here. I'm going to leave it up to you all. We'll call your name, and if you say, hey, I'll let that one go, keep that running total in your mind. I really appreciate you curbing it back a little bit, so we can make sure we get to hear everybody that wants to say something on each of these individual topics, okay? So I'm going to leave it up to you guys to pull yourself off on an item and talk about that later at a next hearing or some other time, unless it's absolutely pertinent that you have to speak about that item, okay? Because I've gone a lot of years without having anyone here to talk about an individual agenda item, and now I'm getting stacks of pulling things off an agenda, okay? Just letting you know. All right. So meanwhile, let's go on to the planning and zoning under the consent agenda, six to seven, Gila Hydrogen Facility. I will take note that item eight has been withdrawn. So under items six and seven, Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments?
Chairman, Supervisors, I have two speaker forms for items six and seven. One of them is from Stephen Anderson. He is representing Gila Hydrogen. It's available to speak only if necessary. Ryan Ruiz, also for items six and seven, also available to speak only if necessary.
Oh, with that, then, I'll look to my board to see if I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items six and seven.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under statutory hearings, Clerk of the Board, number nine, impact statement hearing for the proposed Amberwood Estate Irrigation Water Delivery District. Item number 10 is an impact statement hearing for the proposed Tremaine Park Irrigation Water Delivery District. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items nine and 10?
Chairman, I do have two speaker forms for item number nine and two speaker forms for item number 10. For the record, we did receive one letter in opposition for item number 10 from Joseph Boncontari. I'm sorry if I butchered that, but that letter was shared with all the board offices. Item number nine, we have David Billings. He wishes to speak in favor, and he is representing Amberwood Estates.
Okay.
And we have Annie Johnston, and she would like to speak in opposition to item number nine.
In opposition. So we have one in favor and one in opposition. Whose district is that in?
That's District Two.
District Two. What's your pleasure?
I'd like to hear from the one in opposition and then the one in favor, please.
Okay.
If they can keep their remarks brief, that would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Then let's have item number 10 against, or item number nine, I'm sorry, against. Who is that?
Annie Johnston.
Annie Johnston, okay.
Then if the next person could be on...
And then...
David Billings.
And then David Billings, if you'll please step behind her. And welcome. Come on up.
Good morning. My name's Ann Johnston, and I'm an original owner in the Amberwood Estates. I lived in my home in Amberwood for approximately 25 years. An irrigation system was in place before the homes in the area were built. It was previously used to irrigate citrus groves. The system is archaic and poorly constructed. It never was prepared correctly for individual lot use. None of the yards were properly burned by the builder to contain water, as each owner had the choice to use the system or not use the system. I chose not to use it to do and do not wish to use it now or in the future. When my neighbor irrigates his yard, the water seeps beneath my block wall fence and saturates my yard at the fence line, causes muddy areas and unwanted brush to grow. The water seepage also causes potential compromise of the integrity of the block wall fence. Water is a precious resource in our desert. There must be more modern and efficient ways to water our yards than use an irrigation system originally intended for a citrus grove. Standing stagnant irrigation water opens a door for mosquitoes to breed, causes a health hazard, because they carry encephalitis, heartworms, and West Nile virus. I exist on a single income with the rising cost of increased property taxes, home insurance premiums, and everyday items. It will be much more difficult for me to manage extra taxes or water district imposed on me for something I do not use. For these reasons, I am opposed to the proposal of a water delivery district for Amberwood Estates in Mesa, Arizona.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you for joining us today. We'll, next speaker in the, in for favor?
David, excuse me, David Billings, and he is representing Amberwood.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Billings.
Hello. I, we started this process about 2014. We failed at that opportunity because the person moved that was moving it along. But we started this process again this last year because we do, as, as the Speaker before me mentioned, that the, the irrigation that we, that was installed is, was poorly constructed. Materials and, and the construction material that they used was poor. And one of the things that we don't have in Mesa or county is somebody that's overlooking those construction of irrigation systems. There's no inspection, there's no, nothing going along with that. So we got what we got because it was whatever the contractor decided to put in there. So we've been, you know, repairing it along the line. Generally, we don't ask people that are not taking the irrigation to participate in it. So we've got donations basically from the people that wanted to keep the system going. But the main thing that we are trying to do is have an entity that can kind of have ownership, some ownership over that because it's an infrastructure. It's not owned by the county, it's not owned by the city, it's not owned by HOA, it has no ownership. And so we're trying to have an entity that allows repair and maintenance. And we, in fact, it became very clear that had we not had this process in, in play, we wouldn't have been able to repair it at all because part of the, the irrigation line falls in a kind of a net gray area. It's not owned by SRP or the county, it's owned by Bureau of Land or Recreation somehow. And so we had, so we had to, if we had not had this in play, we would have, we wouldn't have been able to proceed.
Mr. Billings, thank you very much. We're trying to keep it at two minutes, and I appreciate it. You're talking about the business of the county, so Supervisor Galvin.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a motion to approve item number nine.
Okay. We have a motion then to approve item number nine. Any opposed?
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. God, I'm, I'm trying to, thinking of something else. Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Then now we'll move on to item number 10, in which we also have speaker slips.
Chairman, we have a speaker form from Jamie Gardis. She is representing this Irrigation Water Delivery District. She is available on the webinar to speak in favor. And Dawn Petrie, I believe is the last name. And Dawn wishes to speak in opposition of item number 10.
Okay. Item number 10's district is?
District one.
District one. Jack, what's your pleasure?
I would like to hear the, both, the pro and a con.
Okay. Let's, who's in the, you want to go first with who's, who's in this building and then someone else is on? Did I hear someone's on a, on the website? Call a name and, and let's, let's get, let's go.
Is it Dawn Petrie in opposition?
Okay. Mr. Petrie, welcome today.
Supervisors, for letting me say a few words. My name's Dawn Petrie. I live at 178 East Redfield Road. That's in Tremaine Park. We've lived there for 35 years, me and my wife. We've raised four kids and sent them through the public schools there, and, and we also raised a few pretty good rope horses, so. I purchased this property because it was a rural setting, fairly close to town even then. Now it's kind of in the middle of town. We've been, we're in Gilbert, in Chandler now. I'm here to say that I'm not in favor of this Irrigation Water Delivery District. And for a few reasons. Number one, in my opinion, it is unnecessary. In other words, I think that you're asked to look at whether or not it has any public good. I don't think it does. I've lived there for 35 years. We've had irrigation twice a month through most of the year for 35 years, and there's been very little problem. And we certainly don't need a water district to solve any problems because they've been minimal. I grew up in a ranching area. We had ditch and sprinkler irrigation. There was always glitches, you know, that was happened by the upstream user not sending the water on or the downstream user not taking his water. But as farmers, we didn't run to the government and ask for a special tax so that we could quit wringing our hands. We just worked it out. Same thing can happen here.
Thank you.
Second.
But I have to cut you at two minutes.
Two minutes?
Yeah, so you're...
You put me at 10. Am I up?
You're, you're going to have to sit down. But thank you for making your points.
Okay.
Appreciate you being here.
That was a quick two minutes.
Yes, it does. It goes fast. I'm sorry. A lot of people want to speak. So we'll go ahead and call the next person, which is on the internet?
That's correct. Jamie Gardis is on the webinar, and she is representing Tremaine Park IWDD.
Okay. Welcome, Jamie.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can. Please.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. Mr. Petrie, I appreciate your thoughts on the Tremaine Park Irrigation, Irrigation Water Delivery District. And I understand where you're coming from. We have had in Tremaine Park several main neighbors who have always spearheaded any repairs or that we have needed in the past. I've lived in Tremaine Park since 2010, so not quite as long as Mr. Petrie, but I do love my, my property and I love the opportunity to irrigate. The neighbors who we have relied on in the past to keep our private system running are certainly wonderful neighbors and have taken that on themselves. And yes, the people who take water have always pitched in to repair the system. Yet, the neighbors who, who have taken on the leadership in getting those repairs done are certain, are starting to become elderly. Over 80 years old is the person who is normally the person who spearheads repairs. And he came to me earlier in the year and said, "I want the delivery district now." The delivery district is not designed to take a lot of money from anyone but to spread evenly the cost of the repairs for the private system. And it would spread those repairs to people who don't take water, that is true, but the system does service their property if they decide to take it. At the point that Mr. Petrie was making that we don't need the government, it's not really the government that would be running the IWDD. It would be neighbors who are trustees, who are in charge of the money that would, that would accommodate the repairs. So I ask that you approve our request.
Wow. You hit that right at zero. Good, great job on the phone, too. So thank you for joining us today. I'm going to turn it over to whose district this is in. Supervisor, yeah, Supervisor Sellers.
Yeah, and because this, this item is only authorizing them to circulate petitions to get signatures, it really is not approving the district, it's allowing them to get the signatures and find out if enough people support this to move forward. So with that, I will move for approval of this item.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Galvin. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you for joining us both today, all of you, on those two items. Very much appreciated. So, moving on now. Statutory hearings under Transportation, 11, road file declarations. A is number A739, B is number A740, C is number A741. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items 11?
Chairman, none were received for this item.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion? Or do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Tom. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under county officers, under assessor, number 12 is an appropriation adjustment, the Quas Meyer, I hope that's right, implementation. I will point out, I know Supervisor Gates is, is looking to recuse, but I want to point out that our very great county assessor, Eddie Cook, is joining us today. So thank you, Eddie, for, for being back there and taking a look at this item. So thank you, Bill, for recusing. We'll wait for the, him to leave the dais. Door is shut. The board will now consider item 12.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item number 12.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Eddie, thank you for joining us. We'll ask Supervisor Gates to come back to the dais. Okay, we'll now move on to Board of Supervisors, 13 through 16, appointments. Entrum County Auditor, Head Start 05 Policy Council, Housing Authority of Maricopa County, Transportation Advisory Board, and 17, resignation from the Board of Health.
Excuse me, Chairman. I have two speaker forms for item number 14.
Okay.
Jeff Caldwell in opposition and Marissa Hamilton also in opposition.
Okay. Mr. Caldwell and Ms. Hamilton, if you could please approach the dais. Mr. Caldwell, welcome.
Morning, Chair, Supervisors. Cindy is the Deputy Director of the Arizona Department of Housing. She was the Housing Director for the City of Phoenix from June of 2015 to March of 2021. She managed the city's housing department responsible for providing conventional public housing, Section 8 housing, choice vouchers, affordable rental apartments, redevelopment projects, resident supportive services, and single-family homeownership opportunities to more than 30,000 low-income residents. Ms. Stalter is directly responsible for the homelessness skyrocketing in the City of Phoenix. The homeless numbers in the City of Phoenix since 2016 has grown astronomically, but yet she's won multiple awards. And this is a prime example of the deep state failing up. So I wholeheartedly urge you to reconsider this nomination. I know that she is coming from Supervisor Gates' district, which is representing me. And so I am very concerned that she will not provide the, the necessary means in order to help the homeless in our, in our community. And so another issue that I have is she actually supports that every disaster, this is a quote that she supports on Twitter. Every disaster is a product of the inequity, I'm sorry, inequality, erosion of democratic norms and/or unchecked climate change that we have failed to timely address as a nation, and 2020 was a turning point.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hamilton.
Chairman, if I just, if I may just clarify, Marissa, you're also speaking on the same item that would be number 15, not 14?
No, I'm speaking on 14.
You are speaking on 14.
Okay. Item 14.
Chairman, Supervisors, I just want to add on to some of the comments from Mr. Caldwell. Going back to that tweet that she quote tweeted, this was September 1st, 2020. We were well into the pandemic, September 1st, 2020, we were well into the pandemic at that point. And she's blaming the homelessness crisis that was created by the government lockdowns that the City of Phoenix, and you guys also helped to participate in. And, and instead of, and instead of blaming the government actions in response to COVID, which created and expanded our homelessness crisis, which by the way, was Phoenix's plan from the beginning, there, they need to have an expansion of homelessness and crime to create a disaster to make the citizens want to give up their freedom for safety. And instead, she says that this is a product of inequality, erosion of democratic norms, and unchecked climate change. The erosion of democratic norms was the lockdowns. And unchecked climate change, the City of Phoenix leads in that internationally. And so additionally, she, in May of 2020, she said that we needed to have an expandable, walkable urban code, transit-oriented development, gentle density, okay, I'll give you that one, and ADUs all covered in the Phoenix Affordable Housing Initiative. This is essentially, like failing forward is basically what government does, and you couldn't appoint someone that is more woke to this position. You gave us commitments before that you support public, that you support people having their cars, and she wholeheartedly opposes all of that stuff. Do you not vet the people that you appoint to these committees? This is getting, just, it's just unbelievable. If you don't like us coming for public comment, stop appointing such bad people to these positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any comment before I make a comment about another item?
Mr. Chair, so we just had a discussion here of Cindy Stotler. I've known Cindy for many years when I served on the Phoenix City Council. She was the Housing Director. Governor Doug Ducey, a Republican, appointed Tom Simplot, who had Cindy Stotler on board with him. Cindy, look, we need people who are professionals, who understand housing authorities and how we address this homelessness crisis. That's what this board is focused on, investing funds to address homelessness, not to, you know, spout political taglines or to frankly, use the homeless as to score political points. And Cindy Stotler is someone who can provide the housing authority with that expertise. I'm proud to have nominated her for this position. Also, Mr. Chair, if I might, item 17 is resignation from the Board of Health of Dr. Paul Stander. I had the opportunity when I was Chair in 2019 to appoint a Dr. Stander. He's the Associate Chief of Staff for Geriatrics and Extended Care at the VA. Dr. Stander is a fantastic physician who's practiced for over 30 years, and I can tell you, as the Board of Supervisors representative on the Board of Health, we were lucky to have Dr. Stander on the board through COVID. I can tell you, I had some, some very difficult conversations with Dr. Stander in which he provided us a lot of good guidance to get through an unprecedented challenge that we faced with the pandemic. So I want to thank Dr. Stander for his service. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Would you like to, would you like to make an emotion?
Yeah, absolutely. I move approval of items 13 through 17.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And now that we've done, did that vote on the Transportation Advisory Board, I wanted to just talk about real quickly the one that was there before. Merlin Carlson was a great representative of Sun City West and a perfect person to be on this, on this committee. McDott is the road crew basically through unincorporated areas, and then these are arterial streets, city streets in Sun City and Sun City West, maintained by the county and the county taxpayer. And he had to retire due to health reasons. And upstep Pam Schwartz, who has been there time and time again, working in Sun City, Sun City West, and hearing the issues and wants to give time and service. And I think, I don't want to even tell what Pam's age might be, but she's got a lot of spirit and liveliness in her heart and loves the community and loves staying in touch with me about what's going on there. And she couldn't be a more perfect pick because she lets me know exactly her opinion, and that's... and that's the person that we need on these boards. So, I appreciate both of their service. All right. Clerk of the Board. 18 through 25. Special Events License. Oh my, it's all D4 today. Vulture City Preservation. Arizonans for the Protection of Exploited Children and Adults. Arizona Hygiene for Hope. All the Way Up Inc. Copper Rain Foundation. Silver Lining Writing Program. Hemp Legacy Foundation. That's a lot of special events going on in District 4. So, under County Attorney, number 26, is Appointments. Any speaker slips?
Chairman, none for these items.
Great, thank you. The board will now consider items 18 through 26.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 18 through 26.
Second. Thank you, Jack, and thank you, Tom. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under School Superintendent, 27. School District Boundaries Transcript. Under Sheriff, Donations, is 28, and 29, is Weapon Trade for Credit. The board will now consider items 27 through 29.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items 27 through 29.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Treasurer, number 30. Budget Appropriation for Quasimire Class Action Lawsuit. Supervisor Gates.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, have potential conflict on this item?
Great, thank you, Bill. We'll ask you to leave the dais. Okay, Supervisor Gates has left the dais. The board will now consider item 30.
Move approval.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll ask Supervisor Gates to rejoin us. Okay, great. Welcome back. Under Adult Probation, 31. Additions to Fleet. The board will now consider item 31.
Move approval.
Thank you, Jack.
Second.
And thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under County Management, County Manager, 32. Budget Adjustment. Assistant County Manager, 33. Maricopa County Workflow Development Board Annual Report. Number 34. Appointment of Maricopa County Workforce Development Board Member. The board will now consider items 32 through 34.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 32 through 34.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under County Offices, Air Quality, 35. Withdrawal of the Arizona State Implementation Plan. Correctional Health. Amend HEA Plus Community Partner Agreement. Under Elections, 37. Precinct Committee Men. Under Emergency Management, number 38. IGA to assist City of El Mirage and Town of Gilbert with their emergency operations programs. And number 39. Environmental Services. Board of Health Fee Waiver Reimbursement.
Chairman, I have four speaker forms for item number 37. I can bring these to you.
Okay, if you bring those to me, we'll take items 37 off for a second. Do I have a motion for 35, 36, 38, and 39?
So, moved?
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So, we'll go back to item number 37, under Elections. I have 1, 2, 3, 4. I would like to call all four of you up and queue up, if you don't mind. Margaret Fernandez can speak first. Thank you for joining us. Blue Crawley will be second. Ray Michaels will be third, and Timothy Schwartz will be fourth. So, as they're queuing up, welcome, Ms. Fernandez.
Very much, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors.
I can't hear you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I'm glad that you're going to approve the list for today. I appreciate that. But I have a comment for Mr. Gates. I am in your district. I called you twice on November 1st, when the first vote went through on the vacancies. Your office never called me back, and it was important, and I wanted clarification, because it seems to me that when you put things on the agenda, they are so brief that you don't understand what's being passed. In fact, there was confusion. They thought that you had passed a whole list of PCs, but you did not. It was just the vacancies. And so, I would make a recommendation to the board that you would make it clear what is actually being done in your actions, because it was not clear last time. And the other question I have is, what is the process to make public comments before you guys actually take action? Because it seems like the public doesn't know until it's already on the agenda. You guys have already made a decision prior to coming to this meeting of how this is going to be approved or disapproved. So, I think it would be fair to the public to be able to give you comment on what's going to be done, what actions you're taking. Anyway, that's the appearance, it looks like, to me. And the last thing is, is that if you're not, it's all about appearance. If you're not serving the people, who are you serving and who are you accountable to? Because it doesn't seem like you're listening to us. So, those are my comments, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I apologize that you did not receive a returned phone call, and we'll get back with you. So, thank you for me.
Well, it's kind of too late, because that was November 1st.
I appreciate that, but I appreciate you raising that here with me, and I want to let you know that I am personally apologizing to you for that. That's not how we typically do things in District 3.
Well, thank you. I hope it improves. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to address something that Ms. Fernandez had to say. You asked about these items being placed on the agenda. The law states that the Board of Supervisors shall appoint the PCs, so that's what we're doing. We have to follow the law. This is written by the state legislature and signed by the governor downtown. So, the board essentially does not have discretion. And then the second thing you mentioned, and it was of a very good and fair point, which I understand you said, about listening to people. So, the new policy regarding precinct committee men actually arose out of listening to people. It actually arose when folks went to Chairman Hickman and addressed to him the concerns that they had regarding a dispute within the Republican Party. Didn't hear that from the Libertarian Party, didn't hear that from the Democratic Party, heard it from within the Republican Party. And so, when people talk about transparency, honesty, election integrity, we were the ones who followed through in that. And now that these items are being approved for vacancies and for new PCs, it's a result of hearing from Republican PCs. Thank you.
It's only a handful that you're listening to, and it's the ones that you, it's the ones you want to hear from.
Heard from everyone, including yourself. Thank you for your time.
Well, no, you're making a comment, and I need to respond back to you.
I'm answering your question. Thank you.
You're answering, answering a question. Okay, thank you.
It's all one-sided.
Perfect. Thank you for joining us today, Mr. Crawley.
Now, when the upcoming election, one of the positions on that ballot is going to be in the primaries, precinct committee men. When and how do we take out a petition on that? And with the appointments that you're doing, when the primary comes up, and that is one of the positions, do they keep their position? Because I'm looking at these appointments and knowing that they don't have the same status within the party. And when is it that petitions can be taken out? Where do you go to get them? And who do you turn them into? Because what all of these people are arguing about is an appointment, and its value within the whole structure of that political organization is minimal. And I love that they have tried to inform elected members of precinct committee men that it's not your decision on how you operate within that elected office. So, who do I see to find out this information? I'm asking the board if you can have some member of staff see me after the meeting and let me know, as I said, when is it that you take out the petitions? Where do you get those petitions? And I know that it's in every one of the different legislative districts, and how much of it is your independent actions from that, of the system? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Blue. Okay, next up, Ray Michaels.
Thank you so much, Chair, Board. Ray Michaels, Chair of LD8, and I'm glad I'm not the only person up here with a ponytail, so thank you, Blue. I just wanted to speak in favor of appointing the precinct committee men. We really appreciate it. You know, it's such an important job as a precinct committee man, and we take it very, very serious. According to ARS 16822, the minimum duties of a precinct committee man shall be to assist the precinct committee man's political party in voter registration, and to assist the voters of that political party to vote on election days, which is so important. Additional duties shall be provided in the state committee bylaws of the precinct committee man's political party. So, I'm just going to read from the MRS. This is the MCRC bylaws. Article 2, Section 2E, Duties of a PC. The duties of a PC shall include, but not limited to, number 1, voting in person or by proxy at each and every district and county party election. Number 2, assist in the Republican Party in voter registration. Number 3, assisting and encouraging Republican voters to vote on election days. Number 4, attending all district meetings. Number 5, working with precincts from within which they are elected. Number 6, creating enthusiasm and support for the Republican Party. Number 7, helping elect worthy Republican candidates. Number 8, recruiting and training leaders of the Republican Party. And number 9, fostering loyalty to the Republican Party and to promote its ideals. So, as you can see, it's very, very important that we have correct and that we have appointments for those precinct committee men, especially for our upcoming election. Thanks so much.
You're welcome. Okay, thanks for joining us today. Mr. Timothy Schwartz.
Good morning. I was prepared to come here, because I was of the impression that there would be somebody that would be challenging this list that we have before you, and maybe making some amendments. If we, if you can assure me that the list will go forth as it's been prepared and put on the website without amendments, then I can yield my 2 minutes and not give back the time and not even make my comments, because it would be unneeded.
Timothy, let's see if we have a vote to do that. There is a vote in front of this board about the PCs, okay? So, if that's it, go ahead and stand at the dais. Do I have a motion for approval on item number 37?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item number 37.
Great. Timothy, if you go ahead and sit down, and we'll just, because I don't want to delay. So, we'll find the slip. Please, state your name, and we'll go from there. When we find the slip, we'll put it with the others.
Constituent. Hello, public servants. I'm going to say it again. Hello. It's good to see you there, Clint. I didn't think I was going to get to see you today. I'm here because it's important that you said "if" just now. It says "shall." So, we already know it's a done deal. Some people think that I shouldn't come up here and say anything insulting to you, because they're afraid that you won't pass the PC list. Wouldn't that be against the law if you didn't, even if I insulted you somehow, to ruffle your feathers a little bit? You haven't passed it since August. And then when Mr. Michaels came up here, and you assured him the day he gave you the cease and desist, you assured him that it had been passed. And then the very next one, they played the recording, and Mr. Galvin, I tell you what, your performance all in itself, it looked like you almost like were demon-possessed up there. It was very hard for you to hear that you haven't even attended a meeting for 20 months. So, you're definitely not being an active PC. I am concerned that people feel like they have to cater to you guys. You have a job to do. You have an oath that you took. I don't have to come up here and hope and bow and dodge and wave according to what might make you happy. You have a job to do. So, I'm going to ask you, shall, to approve them. I'm not going to say, oh, thank you for letting me talk today. Actually, my mom's out in the lobby. As you guys are sitting there with your drinks, my mom, who has 2 doctor's notes stating that she should not have her water restricted from her, cannot come in here. She's sitting outside, because she doesn't want to take another chance, like the last one, where she had a very serious health concern, because of your made-up rule, as you sit there with your big old bottle of water in front of you. So, I enjoy watching you today pass the PC approvals. Thank you.
Timothy, there you are. Okay. I believe I got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all for joining us on that item. So, I'm going to go back. I'm sorry, the clerk, this is getting to be a blizzard of paperwork. And we voted on an item, one of which is in El Mirage, and Mr. Caldwell and Ms. Hamilton. You wanted to speak on the item. If you'd still like to come up and speak, we have taken the vote and the affirmative. If you'd like to take, okay? This would be on item number 38, which we voted to approve an IGA to assist City of El Mirage and Town of Gilbert with their emergency operations programs.
Chair Supervisors, I think it was 1 or 2 meetings ago, you asked us to fill out individual papers, and so I'm not sure, moving forward, if you want us to put all the agenda items on 1 paper, or if you want us to do individual papers. But besides that, while this item gives the cities more access to more resources, there is a fear of possibility of bureaucracy created with this type of contract. We don't have access to what the emergency plan is. I believe it's because of national security purposes, but we can't see the details of what is going to be implemented in these cities. It is a grave concern, especially with what happened in Hawaii. This is a contract that gets put out there for multiple cities within Maricopa County, and it is very concerning that we don't know if Maricopa County is going to usurp the freedom of the city to act immediately, or if Maricopa County has to have the city call Maricopa County first before they take action. That is a huge concern here. That is what I need to know, because it is, what we saw in Hawaii should not happen. And I know that it is completely separate from what our environment is here, but if there's a major fire outbreak, I mean, what is going to happen? And plus, access to water to fight the fire here is equivalent to fighting the fires caused in Hawaii. That is very similar, even though it's different environments. I wholly support helping cities have access to as many resources as possible, but I do not support Maricopa County usurping the freedom of the city to take action. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Ms. Hamilton.
Chairman, Supervisors, thank you for going back and giving us our time to comment on it. In the City of El Mirage IGA, on page number 2, under Terms of Agreement and County Obligations, it says, "The county shall prepare and maintain a county emergency operations plan or plans with due consideration of hazards that affect all areas of the county." My concern with this agenda item is that, according to our open meeting law and our embuttment's guidance, all the documentation relevant to the agenda embuttsman's guidance, all the documentation relevant to the agenda item that you're voting on is supposed to be posted so that we have transparency with the public. And this was not posted. We couldn't find it on the website. So if, I think the Maricopa County Attorney's Office is here, I'd like you to review that to see if it did violate open meeting law. The county has gotten better at doing this, but we're still finding instances that documents are missing. And so we need the, for transparency, and also for the reasons that Mr. Caldwell stated, it's important to be able to review and comment on those plans because we don't want disasters to happen here, like what happened in Hawaii and other parts around the country, too. So please add that document to the website and to the agendas in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we did already vote on that, so thank you for joining us on that item. Now we'll go back to the agenda. Item is now Finance, right? Yes, okay. So Finance, 40 funds, transfers and warrants under human resources, 41 amend premium pay rates, 42 market ranges, human services, 43 agreement with East Valley Institute of Technology, 44 through 46 amend IGA and agreements with Town of Gilbert, City of Chandler, Community Bridges, Inc. Madam Clerk.
Chairman, I have three speaker forms.
Okay.
Two on item number 44, from Mr. Jeff Caldwell and Marissa Hamilton, and item number 45 from Mr. Jeff Caldwell.
So 44 and 45. So then let's go, so I'll repeat the ask for a motion on 40, 41, 42, and 43.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
And thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? No one opposed. Motion carries. We will go back then to item 44 through 46. And we have speaker slips. Okay, we'll do item number 44 first. Again, come, please come up. Mr. Caldwell and Ms. Hamilton.
Chair Supervisors, this contract has an amendment to add the stipulation to not include forced labor clause. So I greatly appreciate Maricopa County listening to our concerns with contracts not including these clauses. That is a huge improvement, to say the least, but there are still other considerations. This program outright should not exist. The government should not be buying homes to rent out. Buying homes in this environment is risky, even if it is to rehabilitate homes. Housing prices are collapsing faster now than at any point in recorded history for housing. We are looking at a major economic crisis brewing, worse than O-8 in my opinion. Selling the homes now would net a government positive return, but buying in a downtrend is very dangerous. While housing prices are collapsing at the fastest pace in recorded history, the prices of housing is still historically unaffordable. The government buying houses at this time helps prevent housing prices from correcting and helping people to afford housing. The government should not be a bank. It is interesting also that the insurance clause that was amended is to be completely erased and replaced. The original wording is not including the agenda, so we don't know if it went up or down. However, on September 12th, Bloomberg reported, "Rising interest rates are crushing affordable housing developers." It lists crime as the, as one of the top two reasons behind the increased insurance rates of affordable housing. So this goes back to appointing people to the correct stipulation earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Hamilton.
Chairman, Supervisors, I don't, I don't recall learning in civics where the government's supposed to be a bank. However, I understand that we're in a new day where we've changed the definition of what government's supposed to do drastically. I have, I'm going to kind of bottle up most of my comments on all of the agenda items that are related to either the government being a bank or the government building housing for people. This is messing with supply and demand. It's putting more pressure on increasing the cost of housing for everyone else, which then creates then the issue of then more people needing housing because they can't afford it because of government's interventions. Government created the original problem that created our lack of housing supply and made it unaffordable with the massive spending. The money that's coming from most of these agenda items comes from the federal government, which is what created the rise in interest rates, which what made housing unaffordable. And so now we're having more government to fix the problems that the federal government did. So in the future, when your kids ask you, what did you do when the federal government was out of control and spending massive amount of money and making people go homeless? You can say, you distributed the money. In addition to that, I did reach out to a legislator to ask him, to ask this person what their opinion is, because they've looked a lot into housing and solutions for that. And the statement was, "I'm in favor of making sure everyone has a safe place to sleep, but there are ways that are hell of a lot cheaper than $600,000 places that we cannot build fast enough to meet demand for free or close to free housing. These contracts never specify with certainty that they will exclusively, who they will exclusively serve or prioritize service for particular populations. That needs to be in the plan. Finally, is participation in treatment if necessary, or workforce development programs if not retired, required as part of this plan? How do we make sure that we're not just being an enabler to more homelessness for these folks that we're trying to help? Thank you."
Okay, great. And then also then on item number 45, let me see. Well, your comments for 45, or you want to make on the same thing?
Hers was for 44.
Uh huh. And yours was for 44, and now you want to do 45?
Yeah.
Are we going to hear the same thing?
No.
Okay, go ahead, please. Item number 45.
Chair Supervisors, I want to repeat the same thing. However, what is different about this one is you could, the money could be used to construct housing. And so when the government is using the resources to construct the houses, that usurps the supply from the market. And that makes everything else more expensive for the private sector. And so I highly encourage you to vote no on both 44 and 45. They are very similar, but 45 is for either rehabilitation or construction. So government getting involved in construction raises prices for everyone else. Thanks.
I'll look, I'll look to the board if there's any question before we go continue on. You know, community bridges is also mentioned, and I just want to thank community bridges for attending Maricopa County Attorney's, Rachel Mitchell's Fentanyl Forum last night at the Avondale City Council. There was about 150 people there, and that was at 7 o'clock at night. So I appreciate them coming out and talking to the community when everyone's off work and telling about what the scourge and poisoning of our children is doing to this society, and others. So I will look to anyone, or I will look for a motion.
Well, I guess I would like to have our Human Services Director come up and...
Okay, she's here. Jacqueline Parker's here today for questions from the supervisors. Thank you, Jacqueline, for joining us.
Well, and what I'm looking for is just the perspective on exactly how we deal with things like this.
So for, thank you, Chairman, Supervisor Sellers. For items 44 and 45, we are part of a, what is called a home consortium. That is because of the federal funds that we do receive from the housing and urban development. For these particular programs, for number 44, homes are purchased at market rate. They are not purchased either by the county or actually by the town of Gilbert, but rather by a nonprofit in the community. They purchase those homes at a market rate, and they do, the homes do end up being rented, rehabilitated and rented at what the federal guidelines are set to be. For number 45, for tenant-based rental assistance, this should really be viewed as more of a workforce housing opportunity. A family, a family of four to qualify for this tenant-based rental assistance would be making just under $75,000 a year. So they do have to meet specific requirements to rent or be eligible for the tenant-based rental assistance.
Okay, and my understanding is that those requirements will extend, that they're not just a short-term thing?
That, that is correct, Chairman Sellers. These requirements for these particular agenda items, along with our other agenda items that have to do with affordable housing, it is not short-term. What is written in those IGAs is to ensure that requirements are carried out for a specific period of time, whether that is a period of time that is required by the federal government or a period of time that is likened to that, to ensure affordability in the community.
Okay, and I'll just mention that this, this certainly has been a major priority for the cities and towns in my district, and I think in other districts as well. I congratulate our Human Services Group for all the work they're doing with the municipalities to move this forward. It's helping them solve some major issues. So with that, I would move for approval of items 44 and 45.
And 46?
And 46, there are no speakers on that.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing done, motion carries. All right. Thank you, Jacqueline. Jacqueline, did I get your last name right? I'm thinking Edwards. Did I miss it?
You did.
I think, I think we're going to call her back.
Thank you, Jacqueline. I'm sorry. And I caught that myself, so.
What did you say?
I said Parker, I think. So next up is Human Services Continued. So 42 through 55, IGAs with the town of Gilbert, city of Phoenix, city of Chandler, city of Tolleson, city of Surprize, under Planning and Development. 58 through 54 is Sun Ponds 2 and 3 Administrative Corrections.
Chairman, I have a few speaker forms for items 47, 48, 49, 53, and 54.
Okay, I'll just take all the speakers then. Okay, Mr. Jeff Caldwell would like to speak on 47 and then 48.
Chair Supervisors...
Is there a difference in the different IGAs that you're going to call out, or do you want to just use...
Yes. There, yeah, I do have two different talking points.
Okay. Proceed.
Chair Supervisors, so when the government injects money and gives it to a nonprofit to then create a floor for the housing market, it prevents the prices from going down. Then, when the market correction occurs, that price is going to go down later due to increased interest rates. So we are still dealing with the government getting involved and purchasing housing. So instead of using, this also mentions that this is a utilization of the $130 million of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So that means that this is federal funds. If you don't use it, then it gets returned to the federal government. So you have your hands tied on getting this money if you want to. But in my opinion, it would be a better investment to give every household in Maricopa County a tax break for $130 million, instead of giving this to organizations to create an artificial floor in the housing industry. But that would also allow for more private sector businesses and individuals to create more housing for people as well. Thank you.
You want to stay up here for then item number 48? You said there's a key difference between 47 and 48.
So this is about the city of Phoenix buying or buying hotel to turn into units to rent out. And it also gives money to the city of Phoenix. It's $10 million total for two different projects, but therefore renting apartments, basically. And so the city of Phoenix has a history of multiple projects. It undertakes and drastically increase the cost of projects that the free market could have provided at lower costs. The city of Phoenix has multiple projects that it has worked on for affordable housing that has either been delayed, put on property that has been used for waste in the past. They do not have a good track record when it comes to implementing policies that are a good stewardship of our tax dollars. And so again, I would encourage you to use the funds to implement a property tax break. Thank you.
And now 49. Mr. Caldwell, you've got it on 49. Also, we're talking about all these things. So I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell everyone, I'm trying to get to public comment period, and we're going through a lot of subjects here. So would you like to, would you like to speak? I'm going to lose some colleagues.
So on this one, I'll yield on this one.
You'll yield on this one? Okay.
Same, same comment as previous.
How about item number, do you want to talk about item 53 and 54 together?
Yeah, that'll work.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Chair Supervisors, so as discussed previously at the last meeting, you should please make an amendment on top of what your amendment is that requires this company to provide chain of custody documents proving that none of the materials mined or used in the production or storage of solar power were mined, created, or assembled by forced labor or by forced child labor. If you recall, NPR did an article that reported from Harvard, Harvard study, that showed that children in Congo are used in mining cobalt in the batteries that store this power and energy. So please implement policy that will require chain of custody documentation that leads back to the creation of the materials and mining of the materials, so that way we know that forced labor is not used, especially child forced labor. Thank you.
So is that 53 and 54 together?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hamilton, if you could start with, would you like to talk about 53 and 54 together to save time?
No, I don't need to speak on those two items. I only need to speak on item number 48.
Okay, so you'll do that. Thank you.
Yep.
For saving some time, item number 48.
Sure. So there is, as you may or may not know, I previously worked for Councilman Sal De Sisio at the city of Phoenix on a lot of these projects that are building homes and whatnot. And there's an important article that he wrote that I think I would like you guys to take a look at. It was written in 2018 because this homeless problem has been going on for quite some time, and government interventions have made it expand way beyond what was ever intended. And so this document is called "Government Profiting Off the Poor: The Need for Modern Government Reform." And it's on the city of Phoenix website because they actually believe in government transparency, mostly, although I don't agree with most of their policies. And it starts off with saying, "Thousands of people are homeless right now because of good graft, the noble intentions of government gone awry. Some of them are here in Phoenix. These are abstract numbers. They are men, women, and children who could right now be living in decent, affordable housing, but who have been cheated, along with taxpayers, out of the promises we have made. And they represent only one of the many casualties of modern government." The article goes on to say that, "In Phoenix, local politicians approved the construction of an affordable housing apartment project on land the city already owned." And I'm reading this because this applies explicitly to this agenda item. We're going to repeat exactly what just happened in Phoenix for year after year. He goes on to say, "Understamblingly, this project, to benefit the poor, was met with widespread community support. The apartments were built, quite simply, which should have been reasonably, should have reasonably cost the city $150,000 per unit to build, but ended up reaching around $281,000 per unit in construction cost. In comparison, the median home price for a single-family home in Phoenix at the time was $195,007." What's going to happen with this project is Phoenix is going to have good graft, make the projects cost way more money than they should... the projects cost way more money than they should, and you are facilitating more government waste. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So that's it for the speaker slips on those items, and that is items 47 through 54. Any questions or do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 57 through 54.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. I'm sorry.
47 through 54.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Chairman, may I offer a friendly change to that motion for items 47 and then 50 through 54?
47 and 50 through 54?
Yes.
Do you want to go, you're going to have to help me go backwards then if you want to, okay, so let me, let's go ahead and at least take that motion.
I will go ahead and change my motion. So let me know if I'm wrong. So I move approval of item 57, 53, and 54.
47.
Keep saying 57, I'm sorry.
47.
Catch up on the mine.
I know. 47, 53, and 54.
Okay, so 47.
Go ahead and make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
47, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54.
To approve?
Yes. So cut out 48, 49.
To cut out 48 and 49, and we can go back. So we'll approve those? Okay. And do I have a second? Or you did a second, an original and a second to that? Yeah? Are we voting?
Where's our attorney?
Did you catch that?
You've got a motion. You need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Good. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Then now we will go back because those are empty items. What empty items do we have right now to consider or look towards?
And perhaps we should do 48 and 49 individually.
Then let's go back to item number 48. Do I hear a motion for item number 48?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve item number 48.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, 4-1. Okay, now item number?
49.
Item number 49. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number 49.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, 4-1. Okay, very good. I appreciate it, and we will move on. All right. Procurement. Amend treasure information system consultant contract.
Chairman, if I may interrupt before you take these items, just a quick announcement that item number 58 is being continued to the December 6 meeting. That is item number 58.
Okay, thank you for that. I think I had a note to that. So item number 58, is that what you said? 58 is continuing?
That is correct. Number 58.
Is off or looking for to continue?
No, yes, looking to, well, no motion is necessary, but it's been continued to December 6.
It's being continued to December 6?
Yes.
And we don't need to take a motion to continue that? Okay. All right. Then we will let the record show that. So I will go ahead then and say item under procurement, 55, amend treasure information system consultant contract. 56, private investigator services. 57, southeast juvenile courtroom and office renovation phase 2. Under 59 and 60, amend IGA and lease with Arizona Department of Health Services, Higley Project LLC. Number 61, purchase order from Arizona Department of Health Services. 62 is a contract with Phoenix Children's Hospital. 63 is an IGA with Arizona Board of Regents. And 64 is a sole-source contract with the Arizona Partnership.
Chairman, I do have several speaker forms for item number 59, number 62, and number 63.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to lose Steve Gallardo in about 10 minutes. So there's a lot of speaker slips again. So do you want to speak on all these?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Caldwell, you can, let's keep you up here. You all just pull yours out. Item number 59, go ahead.
Chair Supervisors, Maricopa County's website has a page titled "Bridging Climate Change and Public Health," end quote. It links and cites the Bridging Climate Change and Public Health Strategic Plan. This plan was supposed to be for years 2016 to 2021, but it appears to be the master strategic plan for bridging climate change and public health from Maricopa County. On page 32 of this document, it says, "A three-year success indicator of promoting public education about climate and health is, quote, 'Climate-linked health effects are integrated into health professional programs, courses,' end quote." This agenda item is regarding the Arizona Department of Health Services and Maricopa County to continue funding for the dietetic internship program. A major issue that is being pushed by the United Nations and ASU specifically and other institutions in Arizona is reducing meat consumption by the public to mitigate climate change. So this is tying this internship to climate change. And it needs to be implemented where this narrative that we need to reduce our meat consumption to help with climate change needs to be prevented. So I don't know if that is happening or not, but it is something that we need to make sure the government puts guardrails around, so that way we are not restricted as citizens of Maricopa County from going to the grocery store and getting meat off the shelf. Thank you.
Okay, item number 62.
So I've spoken about this contract many times. It's with a new organization, and it says the same thing. It's literally copy and paste. Please stop using these terms. So in this contract, it codifies Maricopa County believing in Healthy People 2030 and Public Health 3.0. From health.gov's website, "Health Equality in Healthy People 2030" has an emphasis on health equity and is closely tied to its focus on health literacy and social determinants of health. "Social determinants like structural racism or systemic bias can affect health literacy and contribute to health disparities." This is a quote off of the government's website. I'm not making this up. And so that is a huge problem. We can't believe, we can't have that codified with our county. It is unacceptable. And it's in every one of these contracts, every single one of them, that you guys have brought before the board. And then it also states for Healthy People 2030 that people that get housing for affordable housing, they are not requiring people to stay sober. And so our tax dollars are not being held up to the standards that I believe that they should be. And we're giving people housing that aren't forced to stay sober or get the help that they need. So another thing is that this contract says that it should be used for Phoenix Children's Hospital's desires. It should be for the people of Maricopa County, not the Children's Hospital. So every single one of these points is in every single one of these contracts, every single time. It's literally copy and paste, change the organization. Thank you.
Now item number 63.
Let's see here. Okay. So this, Chair Supervisors, the doctor from ASU being funded with this money has a resume on ASU's website that says she brings together large diverse teams to address public health challenges such as vaccine hesitancy, food insecurity, and infectious disease outbreak dynamics. Last two are fine, vaccine hesitancy. So what does that mean according to her social media? So on November 13 of 2021, she said, quote, "Nothing better than a kid posing like a superhero before getting their vaccine." On July 7, 2021, she said, "Every Friday in July, ASU will be announcing winners of some great prizes as a thank you for getting vaccinated and protecting our community." The vaccine does not stop the spread. On November 28, 2019, she posted that she doesn't support vaccine exemptions. On May 15 of 2021, she posted that her daughter had zero side effects from the COVID vaccine 48 hours after receiving it. Thank God. The last time she posted about any vaccine or booster was October 17 of 2022. So it's been a while. So to wrap this up, she also believes in mask mandates. She actually created the study that the CDC used to say that all schools need mask mandates. So the children have had detrimental outcomes from masking, but then what if you have a child that is labeled as a superhero and that friend of that person isn't vaccinated? Are they a villain? That's the mentality of a child. So that is what this money is going to be funding, is that doctor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We have Marissa Hamilton and all. You have also three speaker slips. Do you want to go to 59, 62, and 63?
I'm just going to combine them all into one, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
All right. So overall, I have the same exact concerns as Mr. Caldwell, but I just wanted to add one thing. You could actually shorten the meetings if you just instead did an IGA with Klaus Schwab and the WEF, because these policies are all the same that they want us to do anyway. And so if you just did that, you'd shorten up your public meetings. You may only need to have like one a year in that situation. So I'm just very concerned because the climate health issue is not really a situation that, I don't think that these two things should be combined together. And so I have concerns with that. I have concerns with the Phoenix Children's Hospital not supporting their actual patients and the people of the Maricopa County. But ultimately, like you keep saying that you're not trying to drive these woke policies, but you fund them almost every single meeting. So just do an IGA with Klaus Schwab and just get it over with. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for saving us time, so we can continue on because I'm about to lose a colleague. So in front of the board, we do have items 55 through 64. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 55 through 64.
Chairman, with the exception of 58 that has been continued.
I'm sorry, 58. I took that off.
Chairman?
Yeah, 55 through 57 and then 59 through 64.
That's correct.
Amended that. Do I have a second? Tom has seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. We got to item 65 before 11:30. That's the one that we need to have a voice vote. So under real estate, 65, Salt River Power Distribution Easement. The board will now consider item number 65.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item?
Oh, sorry. And the item calls a unanimous vote. Okay, so go ahead.
I move approval.
Thank you, Vice Chair Sellers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gates?
Aye.
Supervisor Galvin?
Aye.
Supervisor Sellers?
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
Chairman Hickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Under transportation, 66, terminate IGA with City of Phoenix to accept 5307 grant funding. 67, amended and restated IGA with the City of Chandler. Number 68, and I guess I have a note of a 68B? Is that, it's noted for me, but maybe 68B is, I'll go back to that. That's probably, sorry, a note from my group in my district. So easement, right-of-way relocation assistance documents.
Chairman, I do have two speaker forms.
Okay.
One is from Blue Crawley for item number 66.
Okay.
Other speaker form is from Jeff Caldwell for item number 67.
Okay. And then Mr. Caldwell.
Bill, I hate to inform you and the rest of the board, Teldwell items have passed And now to get to the less important things. I'm reading this through, and I've been coming up here and saying, where are the infill from the plan that we gave you in the area of, well, what is this one at? South Baseline and El Mirage Road? I've been bringing up the map how many times, saying, what's happening? You know, this is county, it's cities. Where are you going to start putting the transit in there that is supposed to be for traffic volumes? If you've got a three, six-lane roadway, how many buses are you putting there? Because most of the time, it's not. And when I'm reading this and it says, "The parties have mutually agreed to terminate the contract with Valley Metro/RPTA and have chosen to reroute transit service in the area. The project has never started, nor were there any funds exchanged with the..." What? What transit service? When? I've been coming up here how long? And that was one of the areas that I was asking about, and now you guys are doing a contract with the city, are getting out of it, saying those federal funds, the 5703, well, just, it goes away. Well, there is no transit service there. Where is the transit service that they're supposed to be putting there? And what are they doing with the monies from Prop 400 when it comes to transit, not rail? And with the new thing coming up, you need to bifurcate the agencies because rail doesn't need to be having any of its tentacles able to get any of the monies that you guys should be using for each of the communities.
Blue, thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll see you at 90.
Yep. Item number 67, Mr. Caldwell.
Chair Supervisors, I'm going to keep this short. Thank you very much for expanding the roads from two lanes through to four lanes through. Huge. Greatly appreciate it. I greatly appreciate it. It means a lot because that does prove to us that you are willing to put in more lanes for cars. It is huge. So kudos. Thank you very much, Mr. Sellers, for sticking around to hear this. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. We do have, or I'm looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 66, 67, and 68.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you both for sticking here. Steve, do you want to?
We're almost done.
Okay.
I can finish it off here.
Good. Thank you, Jack. Good luck. Under setting of hearings, planning and development, 69, planning and zoning, setting of hearings. The board will now consider item 69.
Still moved.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second. And Mr. Chair, I would note there's a lot of private sector projects here listed on number 69.
Thank you for noticing, and I will also have you notice, Bill, that seven of 16 hearings are in District 4. So it's growing, and I hope that it is growing in a great way. So providing jobs and housing and everything else that comes through there. So I have a motion and a second? Or did I get the, did I get the motion? I got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Under consent agenda, 70, cancellation of election and approval of appointments. 71, civil penalty appeals for approval. 72, cost per felony case annual report. 73, delinquent property tax interest waiver. 74 through 75, duplicate stale dated warrants. 76, monthly donation report. 77, tax abatement. And number 78, minutes. The board will now consider items 70 through 78.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items 70 through 78.
Thank you. Tom, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Board of Supervisors addendum, county attorney, 79, San Diego Gas and Electric Company versus Arizona Department of Revenue. Mr. Gates?
Mr. Chair, potential conflict on this issue.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, Steve, thank you for sticking around because we need a quorum. So thank you. So thank you, Bill. Great. Do I hear a motion to approve item number 79?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 79.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Tom. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Board of Supervisors Addendum, Human Services, 80, IGA with the City of Tempe, Procurement Services, 81, School Safety Pilot Program.
Chairman.
Oh, thank you, Bill. Sorry. Did you hear all that, Bill? Sorry, I didn't... I'm trying to fly. Go ahead.
Two things for item number 81. Just a very minor correction that was brought to my attention. The effective date of this contract for item number 81 should be November 15th, and it's listed as November 1st. So November 15th is the change.
November 15th.
Yes. And I do have a speaker form for item number 81 in opposition from Kevin Bonner, I believe is the last name.
Kevin Bonner. Kevin. Mr. Bonner, thanks for joining us today. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm with the law firm of Fenimore Craig. I represent Mutual, Inc., one of the bidders on this solicitation. We submitted a bid protest which demonstrates that the approval of this contract would disregard the legislative requirements for funding as well as the RFP itself. The proposed contract is also an expansion of the RFP without any public notice or opportunity to bid. The RFP was premised on funds for $2.1 million for three years, and the proposed contract changes that to $5.1 million. It should be subject to a new solicitation. The RFP covers only 35 schools. When the funding from the legislature was intended to cover all schools, more than 1,200, including all charter schools and tribal schools. In 10 other counties, they've stretched this funding to cover all schools and including tribal schools in some cases. The funding is the result of appropriations under ARS 411733, which established the School Safety Interoperability Fund. It's got several requirements which were looked at exhaustively, and they were intended to bring critical information sharing capabilities to the entire county, including all neighboring law enforcement agencies beyond simply radios. The requirements were informed by exhaustive efforts intended to address critical gaps in communications that we see time and time again in active shooter situations, including voice communications beyond simply calling 911, which gets overwhelmed in these situations, picture sharing, and live video sharing from schools, not simply sharing on cell phones. The Motorola solution here does not comply with several of these requirements and others in the RFP, which is set forth in the bid protest. And importantly, it doesn't allow sharing of information among partners, because the partners need to have the proprietary software from Motorola. As I said, other counties have stretched this and have implemented this system using the funding. And regardless of the arguments here, the county really should reconsider and determine whether it's really in the best interest.
Thank you. I'll let you go just a little bit longer, because I've never met you here. So but I do have a question. Our procurement director is here today with us, Kevin Tyne. Mr. Tyne, this is a rarity. We're looking at a contract and through RFP, and I know that all the steps that the county takes. Do you want to let us know with this kind of thing? We're about to vote, so I'd like you to be able to address the issue.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
No, hit it again. And pull it up, too, Kevin.
Can you hear me now?
There. I can hear you now.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this went through a full request for proposal solicitation process of the county. For several months, a evaluation team of experts, including the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, Department of Administration, Arizona Schools Administration, and OET folks, all reviewed and evaluated all of the formal responses that were submitted to the county, and ultimately scored the vendor that best meets the needs of the county. And that's in front of you today as their recommendation. As Mr. Bonner mentioned, the unsuccessful vendor has already exhausted their county administrative remedies via the protest and appeal through procurement. And ultimately, the unsuccessful vendor has the ability to further pursue this in the courts if they so choose.
Okay. So we've heard the school safety incredibly important, you know, and some of the things that are rising up with these contracts and vendor network. I appreciate it. I thank you for being here, because I know that you have to follow this. We have to make sure that we meet contractual standards. Tom? No question?
I have my question. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you very much. Any other questions? So there is the ability to further this through the court system if so desired, but our people looked into this. Okay? Okay. Okay, then. I will look for a motion to... Or look for a motion on item 80 and 81.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 80 and 81 with the correction on the date for 81. It is November 15th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. We will recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Under Flood Control District, item 82 is bids and award for Superstition Springs Golf Course Lake. 83, IGA with the U.S. Geological Survey. 84 is a change order to contract for Vineyard Flood Retarding Structure Rehabilitation Project. 85, easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. 86 is a settlement in the Windus Farms versus City of Phoenix. The board will now consider items 82 through 86.
Move approval of items 82 through 86.
Second.
Thank you, Bill and Tom. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors. Under Library District, 87 is minutes. The board will now consider item number 87.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 87.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Stadium District... Oh, I'm sorry. We will now adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and convene as the Stadium District Board of Directors. Under Stadium District, 88 is a budget appropriation adjustment. Number 89 is minutes. The board will now consider items 88 and 89.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items 88 and 89.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
And thank you, Stadium... What are you, Stadium Secretary?
Stadium President, Mr. Chairman.
Stadium Secretary, sir.
I wear many titles. Very many hats.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. You wear them well. We will now adjourn as the Stadium District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Under Board of Supervisors is the number 90, Public Comment Period. Madam Clerk, do you have anything to report regarding public comment email responses?
Chairman, we received one email comment, and that email comment has been shared with all the board offices. I believe that was regarding elections. But I do have several speaker forms for people that are present that would like to speak.
Okay, very good. If you could bring those to me. I would like to ask our County Attorney's Office to let everyone know the rules of the public comment period, please.
This is the time set for public comment. Pursuant to open meeting law, public comment is a privilege offered at the discretion of the board, and it continues at the discretion of the chair. When your name is announced, please come to the podium, state your name, and identify the issue that you want to address. You will be given two minutes to speak. A warning signal will sound with 15 seconds remaining on the clock. At that time, please make your concluding remarks. In order to make sure all who have registered have the opportunity to speak, the two-minute time period will be strictly enforced. Please try to add information rather than making repetitive comments. Clapping, loud outbursts, or profanity will not be permitted. It is important to note that pursuant to the open meeting law, during public comment, board members may not respond except to specific criticisms made, to ask staff to review the matter, or to give direction to place the matter on a future agenda. Also, if the public comment concerns matters currently in litigation, on the advice of counsel, the board will not respond, because the appropriate form for such matters is in the courts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay. To my board members, I have 16 speaker slips. Okay? So at two minutes each, that's 32 minutes. So thank you for everybody attending. That's great. So and we've lost our two... Or are you sticking around, or...
I'll try to get through.
Okay. Okay. So I will go ahead and queue up four people at a time, okay? So listen, so we can make sure we get to hear everybody in their two minutes. So the first I'm going to call up to the speaker podium is Nancy Womming, and then it will be Barbara Ratty, Seres or Seris Nada, and I'm sorry about names, and Leslie Shepherd. So Nancy Womming, and Nancy, you get to go first, because I almost missed you last time. So thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, board members. I want to directly address the reason we're here for public comment. Number one, we're being discriminated in that most boards of supervisors throughout the county have public comment within the first 15 minutes of their meeting, and we are always here at least two hours majority of the time. So I think to expect the public... You say we can come and comment, but who can take two hours off? Not many people. So it's very... We're being discriminated in that respect. Also, when it comes to the water, there's a woman out back. She cannot drink except out of a straw, and you're discriminating against us in that respect, too. We are not allowed to bring water in. So I want everybody in Maricopa County to know that we don't get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, and we don't get to have water, just as you all do. So I would like to read Proverbs 2023. Unequal weights are an abomination to the Lord, and false scales are not good. A false balance is an abomination to the Lord, but a just weight is his delight. When pride comes, then comes disgrace; but with the humble is wisdom. The integrity of the upright guides them, but the crookedness is the treacherous, destroys them. The righteousness of the blameless keeps his way straight, but the wicked falls by his own wickedness. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Ratty.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm here today to remind you and the people in the room about the injustice to we, the people, that the Board of Supervisors have continued to allow regarding the following items. I will add that you have been notified officially on all of these items. I have personally served you with at least one of these. Number one, our unconstitutionally run elections. Our Arizona Constitution says no machines in our elections, as they take away our private vote and brings in ways for corruption to infiltrate our elections. No action yet. Number two, the Constitution states no third-party contracts, such as Runbeck and Dominion. Well, Mr. Sellers is not here, but I believe Mr. Sellers assigns those documents. We are still in contracts with them today. The Constitution says one day voting, one... I'm sorry, one day voting, not three to four weeks of mail-in ballots, one day in person, and another two to three weeks waiting for results. Nothing has been corrected there. There has been an official... The last one. There has been an official request of the Board of Supervisors to present to the public their official document of oath pursuant to the State and U.S. Constitution. I understand that as of this date, you have not presented them, and we are still waiting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Nada.
Ms. Nada.
Hello. Sorry for the delay.
That's okay.
I would like you all to hear from Mr. Daniel Wood about writ that he had submitted, I think probably a couple weeks ago, to the military court. You've heard a lot of this. I think some of the things you've been served may be very similar. And...
This writ of Quo Wanto. We, the people, state that all trustees, servants, and all members of government are an absolute breach and contempt of the Arizona United States Constitution and are without authority. The United States of America and Arizona governments in whole have been and currently are operating in unconstitutional form of government in cooperation with the State Bar of Arizona, the here-nounced bar. Through conspiracy, subversion, insurrection, sedition, and treason, these are malicious acts harming we, the people. Whereas the state and federal legislative, executive, and judicial branches and all its members did not comply or take the required oath to satisfy Article 6 of the United States Constitution. This mandatory oath is prescribed in statutes-at-large, 1 Stat. 23. Given the time, manner, and place to administer the oath to wit, there is no record or certificate which would provide evidence of constitutionally authority. Therefore, all government officials and all members within the United States of America and within the states have no authority to be seated, take office, receive compensation, or discharge any duties of any office, state or federal. We, the people, have shown in a court of record by way of writ of prohibition, writ of subpoena deuces techum, and writ of contempt of subpoena deuces techum, that all current and past legislative, judicial, and executive branches elected or appointed, branch officials elected or appointed, whichever the case may be, have not taken the required oath.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm just going to tell, you know, as chairman, you know, I'm having thoughts about bringing in recorded messages. I mean, if we're asking people to come here and state their case, or say they probably need to be here and be present for that, instead of having recorded messages played, at least with this chairman. So I appreciate you. I appreciate you standing here and taking your time to be with us today, but I'll just leave it at that. Ms. Shepherd.
Based on your response just now, you kind of altered things by what you had the nerve to say. Freedom of speech means I'm freedom, and my freedom is to bring any speech I want during my two minutes. For you to come up with again your made-up little rules. So here, I'm speaking today to the delegions of demons that reside, apparently, in this room and inhabit some of you. It says right here, "Human pride will be brought down, and human arrogance will be humbled. Only the Lord will be exalted on the day of judgment." You are all now just handed one of these. This is the American Disabilities Act. Why am I showing that to you? Because an 80-year-old woman is sitting outside the X-ray machine, or, you know, where we have to walk through to make sure we don't bring in any guns, because she has a lethal bottle of water on her. Not that you don't have bottles of water, not that there's numerous people that I filmed in this audience with bottles of water, Mr. Make it up as you go. Okay, here we have in Isaiah, it says, "Learn to do good, seek justice." That's you, Hickman. You're going to be held very responsible. He's talking to leaders here. Whether you're a believer or not, this is the standard in which you're going to be held to. It says, "Learn to do good, seek justice, correct oppression." Correct it. Don't be part of it. It says, "Bring justice to the fatherless, plead the widow's cause." My mom's a widow out there. You have a widow sitting on a chair. The lady that came up here that you're now criticizing, what she brought forward, she had to sit in the back so she could make multiple trips, because she has to drink so much water as you sit up there. I filmed you a couple times doing your little drinks. So I just want to let you know that you guys, that there's a judgment. If you are willing and obedient, you shall eat from the good land, and if you refuse and rebel, and you will be eaten by the sword of the mouth of Lord God Almighty. In yes-uh-uh's name, I cast the demons out of here so that for future times, we can come here uninhibited.
Thank you.
And that was out of my mouth, not a recording. And you can't control if I play a recording during my two-minute time. And you shouldn't discriminate. See my staples? See my tape? Could have thrown them all at you, but instead you want to take our bottles of water away.
Okay. Mr., okay, we'll form up again. Mr. Michaels, Ms. Brackett, if you'd like to come up, and, wow, I'm going to need to get that. Karen, Karen really saved? Are you really saved, Karen? Are you really saved? Ray Michaels, Jody Brackett, Karen, are you really saved? And then Robert Grant. If you're all still here, Ray Michaels, Ms. Brackett, Saved, and Grant. Okay. Mr. Michaels.
Thank you, Chair, Board. Ray Michaels, Chair of Legislative District 8. Thank you for approving the PC appointments today. As I mentioned earlier, being a PC is a very important position and should be taken seriously. Supervisor Galvin, I again invite you and your wife to please attend our next LD8 meeting on Tuesday, November 28th, and it will be listed in your call letter going to your email. And if you'd like, as your LD8 Chair, I will allow you some time to address the body, if you so chose to do that. So, as you know, four weeks ago, I submitted to this board two signed and notarized cease and desist affidavits to question the authority this board has to change the longstanding manner in which the board shall appoint precinct committeemen. The following meeting, I submitted an additional 50 forms, and now I will be submitting an additional 34 forms. These affidavits are signed and notarized by citizens, PCs, LD chairs, and officers of the legislative districts and Maricopa County Republican Party. The affidavit states that the BOS provide the specific Arizona revised statutes that grants this authority to your, to this board to make those changes. If you've not read yet the cease and desist, I encourage you to do so. After making no less than 12 phone calls and being routed to several different government agencies, I had a rather long conversation with Maricopa County Attorney Tom Liddy about this very subject. He informed me that his legal opinion is based on ARS 16821B, and that our only option is to change this newly mandated process is to file a lawsuit. So, I present this consideration. Since the newly mandated procedure was only based on a few disgruntled LD chairs, some of them who have since signed the cease and desist, surely over 85 signed and notarized affidavits submitted could persuade this board to go back to the original manner in which the BOS shall appoint the PCs. I ask that you seriously consider that option prior to going to any effort and to file any legal, any legal filings. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Okay. Ms. Brackett. It's Ms. Brackett here. Ms. Brackett? Okay, moving on. Saved. Saved. Okay. Moving on. Mr. Grant, welcome.
Hello. All right. I'm going to touch on a little bit of what Ray just spoke about. When I watched the replay, the, Tom Liddy was having a discussion with Patty Porter. She was a citizen, wanted to know how they come up with this, that you guys can even do, do anything with the PCs. The Board of Supervisors, upon the recommendation of the county chair, shall determine when vacancy exists in the office of precinct committee man. The vacancy shall be filled by the Board of Supervisors. And that's what Tom said. Here's what he left out. The vacancy shall be filled by the Board of Supervisors from a list of names submitted by the county chairman of the appropriate political party. And I'll go a little further. ARS 161821 doesn't grant you authority, oversight, or operational power to do anything with the PCs. We're, we're a private-public organization. We, you don't, you can't create, create rules for us. You can't do procedures or any type of action. So, when you realize that, did you guys talk with the attorney? Because it says really clear, all you got to do is look at the list that the chairman sends and, and fill the vacancies. We don't need any other paperwork. And I hope, so I hope you see the mistake. Because usually, when you make a mistake, you try and fix it. If you don't fix it, and I got to believe you're complicit, because when I make a mistake, I fix it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay. Next four. Mr. Crowley, Mr. Stephen Yates, Mr. Chris Hamlet, and Mr. Jeff Caldwell. So, Mr. Crowley, Mr. Yates, Mr. Hamlet, and Mr. Caldwell. Okay. Blue.
As you know, it's going to be on transit and that upcoming ballot initiative. I have some real problems with it in that it says in there that rail is going to get 3.5% of all the funding that the bus gets, and that's for maintenance and such. In the prior document that Governor Ducey vetoed, it had rail, maintenance, and continuance, right? And do you know how much that had in there? Bill, do you remember? It was a billion dollars. Now, they're saying 3.5% of the total amount of the, what is it going to be, $20 billion over 20 or 25 years? And of that, 40% goes to transit, for the buses, and for all the region. And that'd be nice, except for what we, the way we put it to you before, it was supposed to be each of the communities on a major grid and circulators within, so that you got people to the bus to bring them. I was in Avondale recently, and, oh, that's that area that I just saw in here saying that we're getting rid of the transit that was there, but we never did have any there. And we're going to do it. What, well, what are you doing? And what have they done? So, I wish that Jack was here, because part of what it is, is that MAG document, they need to get it over to our PTA and Valley Metro Rail. I found it fascinating when the head was there giving her dissertation on what's going to be going on and doing. All it was, was rail. We need to bifurcate the agencies. MAG needs to fund rail directly, so that there isn't any coveting of the bus funds, and we need to get all of the west side, east side, north side, and south side communities all a part of it, and fill in all of the grid. 60% of Mesa has what? Zero.
Thank you, Blue. Okay. Mr. Stephen Yates. Stephen, welcome.
Thank you. This is my first time here, and I, I'm a resident of Arizona, primary resident of Arizona. And I tried to vote on Tuesday, and I got to the, to the Paradise Valley location just in time to be able to cast my ballot, which I have right here. And I, I went to that location. It was the closest location to my house. It was like about a half an hour away. I went off this information that was on this flyer here, and I've read what you were saying to people on, on social media throughout the week regarding, you know, your opinion about whether or not this was adequate, acceptable. I want to just point out that I do not agree at all. I think that this is an egregious, what, what you were saying, that this does not support in any way, shape, or form what you were saying regarding the times being posted. And I don't want to go on about that, but, but one of the things I wanted to say was that the, you know, the things I was reading about Mr. Richard and the Chair, in terms of going on to social media throughout the week, prior to this forum here to speak on this, on this issue, I cannot accept that. Some of the things that were written in, in the newspaper, and I don't know if this is true, but, I mean, just like the off-the-cuff remarks that you were making to people. You have a job to do. And I heard, I've heard, I sat here and I listened for two hours, right? I heard a lot about, you know, documents not being submitted, that should be submitted. Heard a lot about that kind of stuff. And that speaks to what I'm saying about this. You have a problem with paperwork. Yeah, apparently. I mean, that's what I hear, I'm hearing a lot of people say. I vote. I vote in every election. My vote should have counted. It should have counted.
Thank you for, thank you for joining us today. Mr. Hamlet.
Chris Hamlet, Southeast Zone Chair, LD9. In the beginning, Mr. Galvin spoke about some people being cut off with water when he was talking about that fire chief that was here. And by doing so, you acknowledge that water is critical to sustain life, and it's essential. So, I want to, thank you for the great segue into the water debacle debate here. The optics on this are terrible, gentlemen. It gives one of two, one of two optics to me, is it's either evil, or it's out of cowardice. Evil meaning, you know that there's people that can't sit here for hours on end without water. So, you purposely do it to quash the dissenting voices, so that you can get them out of here. I walked, I, I know of at least two people that need to have water on hand medically. And when I walked in today, there was two more literally begging up there to bring their water bottle in. And just like Leslie said, that lady in the back, she has to sit back there so she can be close to her water. One of them had a doctor's note, and that tyrant at the door, who you guys claim are here for our protection, too, would not let her bring it in, even with a doctor's note. Or it's cowardice, you know, afraid somebody's going to throw something at you or empty it at you. And, you know, if that situation ever arises, play a little defense. Soon as you see the bottle coming to your face, move it out of the way. Have one of these guys cuff them, and you never have to deal with them again. We, the people, come in here, and we talk all the time about a lot of important topics, and you never listen. And we understand that. You are, every agenda item you go through, you go up and down it, you've already had your minds made up, and you never listen. Why not listen to the people on this one little issue? It's very simple. It's life-sustaining water. Listen to them on this one topic. And now, I want to talk about what you said at the beginning about them being here for our protection as well. That is not true. Mr. Galvin is a registered Republican. About, last year about this time, he came to Mesa Republican Women, and he had that gentleman and that guy Ken, off-duty, in, in clothes, and this man was sitting there giving me the stink eye the whole time like this, and then pointing me out to Ken, and pointing their finger. Tell me how that is protection for us as well. God bless you all. Have a good day.
Chair Supervisors, I was at the Paradise Valley School District on Tuesday. As that gentleman was pointing out, it actually closed at 4:30. The piece of paper that he was holding up was in the packet of the mail-in ballot that said that we can drop off our ballots at any location until 7:00 PM. That is the disconnect that he is talking about. I didn't even look at the website, because it said drop it off until 7:00 PM. And one of my neighbors voted the previous day and told me the closest location, so I went to it at 4:45, and I got there 15 minutes after it had closed. There were, there was at least 1,000 people that came and gone from 4:30 to 7:00 PM at that one voting location. There are many people on record that have stated that they cannot vote. I have a recording from 6:52 until 7:00 PM of all the people who would not be able to vote. It is on my cellphone right now. I've not shared it with anyone, but you guys allowed for disenfranchisement in this election. It is extremely troubling that, Mr. Hickman, you said that, oh, it's a bond election. Now this again? You didn't even hear the problems that occurred and jump to a conclusion that people are just saying that it's a stolen election. It's voter disenfranchisement. There were Republicans, Democrats, independents, third-party people. We spoke to literally at least 500 people. That does not count all the other cars that came and gone. We had to tell people the next closest place. We were actually told by the staff that the next closest place was like 20 or 30 minutes away, when in actuality, the next closest place was told to us by a teacher that worked at a place that's eight minutes down the street. So, we were lied to by multiple people. And 7 o'clock is state law. Okay? 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, state law. Unacceptable. Another failed election. Thank you.
All right. This, Mr., will form up. This looks like the last four. Mr. Neil Sheer, Robert Canterbury, Marissa Hamilton, and Sarah O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Really, truly, thank you for your service. I'm Neil Sheer, longtime Scottsdale resident. A couple of topics I wanted to just share with you. The first falls under the category of thank yous are better late than never. I retired as CEO of the Anthem Community Council in 2020, had the pleasure of working with many outstanding county officials. Supervisor Gates, you were always there for Anthem and the unincorporated areas that we consider our neighbors. The project comes, the most impactful project that comes to mind is the water hauling station that we built in record time, not for Anthem residents, but for our neighbors in New River and Desert Hills. As you step away from elected office, I wish you all the best, and Godspeed to you and your family. Madam County Manager, Jen, thank you for being so responsive to my pesky questions and issues when you were in the ombudsman office and in county planning and development. You made a big county government seem like a next-door neighbor with your responsiveness and respect. My second comment involves two IGAs the City of Scottsdale approved on September 19th for county funding support related to an affordable housing project at the Paiute Neighborhood Center. I serve as Chair of the Scottsdale Human Services Commission and also the Scottsdale Housing Agency Governing Board. So, I see firsthand the critical need to help struggling seniors and families find safe, stable, and affordable housing. This project is ideal, as it is a cooperative venture. It's on city land, and it is at a community center that provides wraparound services to neighbors and future tenants. Supervisor Galvin, I also want to thank you for your continued help to bring these IGAs forward. I've not had the pleasure of meeting you. I hope to do so at the groundbreaking of this outstanding project that serves Scottsdale and District 2. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sheer. Thanks for being here today. Mr. Robert Canterbury.
Mr. Chairman, Board. My name's Robert Canterbury. I'm a candidate for Maricopa County Board of Supervisors in District 4. In regards to what Mr. Caldwell said, when he brought up the, the fact of child labor and forced, forced labor, the U.S. State Department has deemed forced labor, forced child labor as modern-day slavery. And every time you sit up there and you support any project or any, anything that, that deals with and supports those two trades, you're letting the nation know that you also support modern-day slavery. Another Board of Supervisors meeting, but another meeting that not all five supervisors are present at the end. I understand that you guys have other business to take care of, and I can only assume that most of these meetings are with people that you guys oversee. That means they are on your, are on your schedule.
That's right.
Now, I don't know who appointed Wednesdays to be the day that the Board of Supervisors meet with the public, but this is our day. Government doesn't sleep. I served 20 years in the government. I've worked many 36-hour days. The government is not an eight-to-five job, I got to be home at 6:00 for, for dinner. Who cares if these meetings last to 8:00 at night? Most of the people that are here either took off work to be here, or they're retired. So, time is not an issue to a lot of people, only to you. Mr. Galvin, you said you follow the law. What's the law of Arizona say about our elections? You pick and choose what you want to follow the law on. And Mr. Gates, you recuse yourself in a lot of things. I have never known to you to recuse yourself when a judicial branch budget comes up and to where you approve judges' salaries and other special pays that directly benefit you. Am I correct? Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman members, one, I wanted to just thank.
Chairman members, one, I wanted to just thank you for making the cup a little bit bigger than the last time I was here. If you could make it a little bit bigger, I think that, like the size large at McDonald's, and then allow people to have straws, it might solve this water debacle. And we can call it just a solid win for the people. Because it's really sad to see people with disabilities being prevented from being part of this meeting and having to see them struggle walking up and down. Like, my mom's disabled. This is really difficult to watch, the treatment that you have of humans. But I'm primarily here to talk about the elections. I'm a voter in the Paradise Valley area, and I was also there with Mr. Caldwell when we found out that the location was closed. There's some misinformation going around. I'm concerned at the comments, Chairman, that you put out in the media, basically saying, oh, gosh, now it's bond elections? Yes, it's as many elections as you can't operate competently. That's the problem that we have. The recorder said that they're not responsible for anything except counting the votes, which isn't true. They put these documents together, and they put the voting instructions together. And they knew on September 21st that these locations closed before 7:00 PM, yet they still put in the insert telling people that they would close, they would stay open until 7:00 PM. And in the voting instructions. They also did five social media posts on it, including on Election Day. Stephen Richer even went on TV telling voters that all locations would be open until 7:00 PM, knowing that that wasn't true. You took issue with me saying that it was chaos and voter suppression, but I want to point you to a study by the Brennan Center and Common Cause, which actually calls it deceptive practices, and it's a violation of ARS 16-1006 to provide materially false information about the time, place, or manner of voting. We've got to get this... Our act together when it comes to elections. This was a small election. What's going to happen in 2024? We can't rely on you running an election competently. That's not okay.
Thank you for joining us today. All right. No alpers. Okay. Sarah O'Neil, welcome.
Thank you. Chairman, Supervisors, my name is Sarah O'Neil, and I'm a resident of Scottsdale. I just wanted to pass on a situation that did occur during the election. There was a voter in Buckeye that actually inquired with some of us if this election, being a jurisdictional, was only... Ballots were only sent to property owners since bonds are property taxes. And we said, no, it's every active registered voter. 1.9 million ballots went out. Only less than half a million came back in. But there were two other registered voters at his residence that did not receive ballots. So the inquiry went to the Elections Department. They confirmed that actually indeed those ballots were confirmed mailed. But in addition to other ballots, though, a total of five ballots were confirmed mailed to that address. Only one made it. Only one made it. So when UPS, a third-party federal agency with no direct oversight by the Maricopa County Elections Department, is a key to distributing, collecting, protecting the ballots that have quite a value, quite a value to the contractors that are waiting in the wings for these bonds to get approved, I think that that's an issue that's never really been addressed. We talk about runback third-party. Yes, that's another issue. They're not even subject to FOIA requests. The people can't get information from them. But UPS seems to be a much bigger issue. Arizona Family reported and posted a video of a postal worker disposing of crates of mail into trashcans in Glendale.
Thank you. Thank you for concerns, and hopefully the Elections Department heard that about Buckeye resident. I'm sure they're here to help. So that's it for the public comment period. We'll now move on to number 91. Supervisor's summary of current events. I'll ask Jen.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to make a brief comment to also thank Ken for his service. And as you all mentioned, I am going to miss coming into the 10th floor every day and just seeing his smiling face. He's a true professional, and he is just... Cannot be replaced, which I'm going on the record of saying I did deny his request to retire. But I think he's still pushing forward. So thanks, Ken. I'm going to miss you.
Very good. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I'll just make it real brief. We're coming up to another holiday, Thanksgiving, so just want to wish all our wonderful employees and community just a happy Thanksgiving. It's a great time to be able to bring the family together and have a nice meal and also put out some community service. We'll be doing a lot of stuff the day before Thanksgiving and even Thanksgiving Day morning to help others. So just wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Awesome. Thank you, Steve. Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to take this opportunity, and Blue did mention it, but very saddened by the death of Thelda Williams from the City of Phoenix. I had the opportunity to serve with Thelda on the Phoenix City Council, and I can tell you, she's one of the finest people that I ever had the opportunity to serve with. She served both at the City of Phoenix and actually here at Maricopa County for over 30 years. And she's someone who was in public service for all the right reasons. She didn't always toe a particular line of a party. She did what she thought was right, and she made this place a better community. So mourn the loss of her. I definitely send our prayers to her family, and I just am so grateful for the opportunity to have served with her. This is a better community because of Thelda Williams. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Tom.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yes, first of all, condolences to the family and friends and colleagues of Thelda Williams. I believe she served as interim mayor a couple of times. Three times serving in service to our city as interim mayor. I had always wonderful personal interactions with her. And the best way you can sum her up is a public servant. She really put people of Phoenix first. Last week, I spoke at the Jewish National Fund Annual Dinner. It was a very emotional night. It was a large group of people. I expressed support for the Jewish community in District 2 and Maricopa County in Arizona. Unfortunately, people had to confront the realities of what has been going on over there, and they showed a video of the attacks of October 7th, which was horrific. But it's a reminder for everyone to be aware of what's going on. And just today, the news that a three-year-old girl who has been missing is actually an Arizona resident, Abigail Lee Dunn. She was shot in the arms of her... She was... Her father was shot while she was in his arms. And so I'm praying for her safe return, and I hope she's brought home. And just like Mr. Gallardo, I want to wish everyone a happy, safe Thanksgiving. I always want to thank everyone who came down here and took the time to attend or speak. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, real quickly...
Yeah, Steve.
I'm sorry. And I wanted to wait for Bill to make those comments about Thelda. I didn't know her as well as you did. You served with her for many, number of years. But I did have an opportunity to serve with her on Valley Metro. And that's when we used to sit next to each other, and she was just a wealth of information. She knew this stuff. I mean, I was kind of new to transportation. I'd rely on folks like Blue and others to help guide me, you know? But she really understood the city. She understood the needs. She understood the community. So, yeah, my condolences to the family. I know they're having... I think they're having a naming thing this Friday. I don't know if it's public or not, but they're having something like this Friday. But, yeah, I do share the loss, not only to Phoenix, the entire state, and particularly her family. She's a wonderful person, a wonderful public servant. And like I said, I didn't know her as well as Bill did, but the short time that I was able to serve with her for a couple of years on Valley Metro, she was an awesome person to work with. She'll be missed.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it. Thelda Williams was just a class example of a public servant. I remember, didn't know who she was, I was appointed to this board, and about three months later, she invited me to come out and talk to a neighborhood group. And at that point, I said, you're not in my district, you know? And I'm not in your district. And she said, yeah, but you're West Valley. And Andy Kounasik thinks highly of you, and I think you should meet some people. And she was awesome with that. She also... I was here at Luke Air Force meetings because of the West Valley, too. So as a representative of the City of Phoenix, especially when she was operating under interim mayor, she realized that Luke Air Force Base is such an important existence to our country's freedom and safety. So applaud her for that. I just wanted to say two things. Number one, happy Thanksgiving to all of us. It is a time for family and togetherness and to get around that table and talk about things, but also realize the warmth and love a family brings and support. So please be careful, though. There's a lot of miles. I cannot believe the amount of people, as I'm driving down I-10 to these meetings, that are still on their phones and texting. I can't fathom it. And I have a 16-year-old and an 18-year-old, both relatively new drivers. And I say, you guys are going to be the best drivers ever. You've got training from the farm. You've got everything, but you still have to depend on the worst driver around you running into you. So please be careful with that. By all means, if you go by somebody and they're down, and they have their heads texting down, shoot them a nice look of, I want to be here for my family and not you in my lane, okay? So Ken... Where's Ken? Go forth, have the greatest retirement, man, and take care of yourself like you took care of us. I so appreciate it. And when I think about you and the law enforcement and protection of all of us, I'm going to talk about just the last thing. Last night, I was invited to a fentanyl forum that Rachel Mitchell presented with the County Attorney's Office, and we had some of our departments there, public health. And I was told, you know, I can't continue to say, at the first one I attended in February with my son, we walked off with a Narcan dosage, and I said, you know, it would be good to put this in your car and have it with you because all of us are the first responders. You're going to be a first responder someday. Somebody's going to smoke a joint and have fentanyl in it and not know. And you have to be prepared. So he's kept it in his car since February. And then the expert said, well, that's probably degraded now because of the Arizona heat. So... But anything's better than nothing, Glenn. So I would highly suggest we all get a hold of that as they become on the market and just be prepared because it is discouraging and horrible to see kids and, you know, 18-year-olds all the way to 70-year-olds laying in the racks of the Maricopa County Medical Examiner's Office. The overdose deaths are out of control, and there is nothing like taking a tour of a vital area that Maricopa County performs in when it comes to the final dispensation of a victim. So that's... It's not a good sight to see, everybody. And just put it in your mind's eye, those smaller, you know, those smaller feet, those smaller legs there because they bought a, you know, they went to sleep and never woke up, okay? So with that and that happy note, I'm sorry. Let's go back, celebrate the love and the support of your family, and cherish them and cherish these times that we all have together. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.